I'll go ahead and call the board, the November 20th meeting of the West Bath Select Board. Ask you to arrive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is to elect a new chair. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Pete Heinz.
I will second that nomination.
Oh, nominations have been made and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? I will stay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes, and the warrant. What is the pleasure of the board?
The only thing I would make a note on for the minutes is the copy that's in our packet. Still shows that I made-
No, that's last.
And seconded a motion. So that would be my only-
Oh.
The minutes from this-
I think you corrected those, didn't you?
I thought I did.
Yeah, it's in this printed copy. It's not sort of-
That's from last week. We did update that.
Okay. Just that was my only comment. Other than that, I made a motion to approve as written.
Sorry, second?
This is for October, so I will second that.
And currently sent me a-
Yeah, not that correct.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous.
The minutes for September. Didn't we not vote on minutes for the meeting before because Ashley wasn't here?
November 16.
October 16.
How'd you know about this?
So we just approved October 16 and November 6.
Okay.
November 6 was the first.
Oh, that'd be the old package. I got it.
Because you took your vote to hold.
Yes.
Next meeting of the Select Board is scheduled for December 4 at 5:30 here at Town Hall. Would the board be interested in reversing new business with old business? So we can do the abatements and get Josh back on the road. I know he has a plenty to drive home.
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead, Josh, and we'll run through the abatements.
Thank you very much. Josh Berry with RCS Assessment. Nice to meet everybody tonight. We've got several abatement applications in front of you, three of which I have provided recommendations to abate, three of which I've recommended to deny. And I can go down through them as they're listed on the agenda. Christina Center. She gets requested in the abatement. And in review of her property, I found some inadequacies or inequities, I should say, on some of the building assessments. So I'm recommending a reduction of her building assessment by $17,300 or a tax amount of $145,32. The rest of the houses along that stretch were being reduced functionally other than hers. So make that recommendation.
Do you want to go down through these?
Yeah, why don't we run through them one at a time? We'll take action and then fill us in on the next order.
Any board questions on this first abatement application? Abated tax amount of $145,32.
None for me.
There are motions to approve?
Any motion to approve?
Other than that?
All in favor? That is unanimous. We'll go through them all and then we'll slide in.
Yep.
Okay, next one.
Yep, next one on the list here. Hanno Schickrem and Jennifer Webster. This was a vacant lot that they just recently purchased. The purchase price was much less than the assessed price or the assessed value of it. And what I found was they were being assessed for a developed parcel rather than an undeveloped. So typical, or at least our standard practice is to reduce down an undeveloped lot, which I did that, and it brought right in line with what they just paid for it. So really just a classification change on their lot.
Okay, so for this one, we're looking at an abated value of $143,300, abated tax amount of $1,203.72. Any questions?
To approve as proposed.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. On to the third one.
Next, we have George Langman. He had submitted an application earlier this fall. And in review of his property, I didn't really see any inequities or differences in how he was being assessed with his neighboring property. So my recommendation would be to deny this abatement. I've discussed it with him. All the denials, I've talked with and discussed the reason for my recommendation, and they all understood it, so.
Any board questions on this one? I'm open.
Take a motion to deny the application for abatement. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Fourth one?
Next one is just an acreage discrepancy. The owner, Ryan Senator, had 4.1 acres in our real estate software. His deed proved to only have 3.5, so we made that adjustment and abated up that amount.
For this one, it's an abated value of land of $4,000, increase of the building of $100. Total abatement $3,900. Tax abated is $32.72. More questions?
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Next one, Heidi Vassar. She has submitted an application for abatement on classification of her home. And when the revow was completed, all double-wide homes were listed as ranches, which is true for all of them. But then they were reduced down on their grading. So it's really just a preference of the revow company. The classification of the home is just descriptive, but that's how they decided to do it. So she's being assessed and graded similar with every other double-wide down. I discussed it with her. Recommend the denial on this abatement. Her assessment is fair and equitable, in my opinion.
Questions from the board? Motion?
Motion to deny abatement. I will second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That is also unanimous.
And last is Mr. Wayne Renshaw. He and I have been reviewing his property for a couple of years now. And we had made some adjustments prior to this year's commitment that I don't think he was fully aware of. And his taxable value had decreased this year along with his taxes owed to the town. So after discussing that with him today again, he understood where we were in recommending denial on this abatement as well. And he understood why.
Any questions from the board?
No. I'll go ahead and move to deny the abatement as recommended. Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I just want to answer with-
Yes.
Sign the ones we approved. We have to sign the ones you-
It's on the back.
I may just hang out for a couple-
It's a little sign on the front and deny.
Yeah, next one.
Just the ones that are denied on the second page.
Yeah, the denials are on the back of the application.
All right, now we'll go back to old business. Old business, item one, discuss boundary line with bath. No hanging ground base since the last meeting. Item two, meet with Jeff Martin of Conex Solar LLC requesting access utility easement to town.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Martin with Conex Solar. We're a vertically integrated tour company, so we already been from the development of projects. With this project, we have a team that installs the projects that we develop, and we have operation maintenance division as well called One Time Solar. So we're with the projects generally from start to finish. Been around since 2011. We're based in White River Junction, Vermont. We have an office in Brunswick. We've done, this is our, I think our 13th project in name that we've developed, and we have installed more than that with our construction teams as well. So in terms of this project, I have some copies I can share with you. This is the site plan that was approved by the planning board last, no, not last February, February 2024. And it was, that approval was extended to February 2026. So that's when the site plan approval will expire, February 26. And that's why there's some urgency to this request. It's a one-megawatt solar project, groundout solar project. Just to give you a sense of scale, that's roughly enough to power 270 homes. It's a rough estimate, but decent estimate. And then the fenced area, which is the line with the dot that goes around the array there, is 5.86 acres to give you a sense of the physical scale. Originally, the project was proposed to come off of Tonalane, which is up in the northern, yeah, thank you, Julie, northern portion of the plan here. And that's where the parcel that the project is sited on, that's where the access for the parcel is. So it made sense to come off of Tonalane. That's why the project's called West Bath Tonal Solar. And that was, I think, in 2021 before I was even with the company. That we proposed that with the planning board. When we proposed that, we got feedback from the neighbors in the area that they prefer us not to come through that neighborhood area. So we redesigned the project to come off of Kings Highway to the south of the project. In order to do that, we thought that we needed an easement with Mr. Engelhardt, who owns, it's kind of hard to keep an average ones, but three different parcels that lead up to the project parcel. So we got the easement from Mr. Engelhardt, and then went to the planning board with this new design. And we were all under the impression that that easement was going to get us up to the project. And the planning board approved the plan. When we went to survey the easement area with Mr. Engelhardt, our surveyor identified that there's actually a town-owned parcel that's right off of Kings Highway. So that's, yeah, this plan here. You all have a larger copy of that right here. So that's the rectangular dashed line here. You can see. And that's, I think it's 66 feet in width. I'm not sure exactly, but like maybe three or four hundred feet, something like that. So once we learned that there's this project parcel, of course, we need an easement from the town to get up to our project. So what we're requesting is a non-exclusive access and utility easement for the project. And then there's also Central Main Power, CMP, needs to put three poles there as well. So there'll also be an easement from the town to CMP. So the plan lays out what that easement area would look like. The hatched area is the easement area. And then you can see the dark polygon is the proposed access. And then you see the first three poles identified on the plan are the CMP poles. And then the last pole, which is up in the north, I forgive myself, northwest portion of the town parcel, is a project-owned pole. So we provided an easement document as well, for the project as well as one for CMP. The town attorney, Kristen Collins, has reviewed it. She suggested the addition of a sentence in the project easement that I think is fine. Our attorney is working with Kristen just to modify that slightly, but I don't think there will be an issue there. The CMP easement, Kristen pointed out that the CMP poles, as you see on the drawing, are kind of in the middle of the town parcel. So she recommended either adding language to that CMP easement that would effectively require, so future hypothetical, if the town wanted to create a public road to get to one of the other parcels in that area, you know, she thinks that might, those CMP poles might be in the way of a public road. So she recommended either putting in some layers that would effectively require CMP to move their poles if that were the case in the future, or moving the poles to the north of the proposed access. So we looked at that with our engineers. It is a little tight. So let me back up. I don't think that CMP is going to agree to a change to their easement document. It's just what template that they use, and they're not usually open to adding language. We did look at moving the poles to the north of the access. It is pretty tight because you see this section down here is a wetland that they identify as part of a project. So we can only shift the access to the edge of that wetland. We can't, we don't want to fill that wetland with an access. So we can shift it a little bit. And then to the north, we're pretty constrained by the easement that we have with Mr. Engelhardt. That's, you know, that's a very important part of his property because he's a logger and he uses that as a log landing. So I think we can fit it to the north, but I did want to talk with you all about the possibility of keeping the poles where they are, given that realistically, if the town in the future did want to create a public road here, you'd be probably following the project access anyways and just improving it. And there's, Julie and I were talking about this this morning. There's 20 feet at least from the southern edge of that proposed access to the northern town property boundary. So theoretically, there should be room to improve the access to create a town road in the future if that were something the town wanted to do. So that's one request is that we could consider that as my, and then the other, I think from our perspective, my important request is to hold a special town meeting for the town to give the Select Board the authority to sign an easement with the project as well as with CMP. And in terms of that, we're happy to cover the costs associated with holding that special town meeting. We also, we've also talked about covering the town attorney fees. And we'd also propose a payment of $1,500 for the easement office.
Let me, any board questions? Rob, can you add any input?
Any idea how wide this accessory is going to have up to there?
That, as proposed, is 14 feet wide.
And you're saying there's enough, there's 20 feet beside the pole that extend this road?
So not, so not, there's 20 feet from the southern edge of this access to the northern boundary of the property boundary, town property boundary, at the least. So that's like around this pole here. Now, I don't know the road standards or what it requires. So I just think that there's at least 20 feet.
You guys will need a road opening permit.
Yes. Yeah, so we talked about this at the planning board meeting. I think because we thought it was on private property, the CEO, Jochen, didn't think we needed a permit. But given that it's on town property, I imagine we will.
Right. Well, if it's leading a town road and if nobody's gotten a permit for that road, yeah, it needs to be worked.
Absolutely.
How much land, if you don't know how much land we have up there that we need access to?
I don't know.
The town owned has that little luster. We don't own any. So it wouldn't hurt us that if we didn't have it right away after, that's all of it.
Yeah, as the landlord, would be the likelihood of us needing to put a road under.
That's why we never do.
Yeah.
Would be my guess.
Essentially, we've built the road just to build a hallway to the edge of the property, is my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's not, we're not walking off, you know, Kenank and five acres or law, that's-
Sure.
Makes sense. That's it.
Any public comments? Julian, are we approving the town meetings? Or are we approving the easements? Or are we doing both ways?
The timeline I wrote up would end up having, if you approve to have a town meeting, it would give us time to, of course, times where I could, this won't help us anymore. At the December 18, if the special meeting approved signing the easement, so the special town meeting would be before your meeting?
Yep.
It would be on your agenda to sign the easement. So this, tonight, we just need to schedule a special town meeting.
And we have to approve the language for the, to put forward? Or can that be fleshed out later if CMP comes back with something? Or are we deciding whether or not to include amended language?
The language is from Kristen, the attorney.
Right.
And it wouldn't hurt to approve that as well tonight to get ahead of it.
I would just ask that, because we're still working with Kristen on the project easement language, that there be some flexibility there if there's a slight change to the language there. And then in terms of the CMP easement, you know, my, our request was to consider keeping the poles where they are and not adding that language to the easement. But as I said, if that's not acceptable, we can look at moving the poles to the north.
But we have wiggle room. We can do it at the December 4.
But you have to advertise it.
The public hearing.
Oh, okay.
And special town meeting. We don't put the warrant and advertise it.
Right, but we'd have to have a public hearing on the 4th before we go to approve the easements.
Yeah, we have the public hearing so we can get feedback then. And then the advertisement for the actual town meeting would be where we'd have to have that. So we have another meeting.
Understood.
Right, we have another meeting.
Yep.
So we should just move forward with deciding on the town meeting and not the language.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Before we do that, any other board questions? We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve a special town meeting to be done. I have to read that?
Yep.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to execute easements to West Bath Tunnel Solar LLC and Central Main Power over an unused portion of Kings Highway for the purpose of installing electrical lines and make your access to serve the West Bath Tunnel Solar Project on land at map R01 Lot 13.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Sorry, I made your read.
You're okay.
All in favor? Unanimous?
I'm not making a motion, but I did-
Thank you very much.
-give you the collective information.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, brings us to item three. Meet with Steve Rena, our commissioner of guardians of purchasing and bid procedures. We did get some clarity and thinking with the attorney. Really, the gist is this, this section that, section half that talks about no bid is to be submitted by an elected appointed town official, blah, 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 only applies to projects in which that town official is directly overseeing. So if it's a project that is overseen by a third-party engineering firm, this section doesn't apply. If it's a project that the board is directly overseeing or that the board is directly putting out to bid or the town administrator is directly overseeing and putting out to bid, this section doesn't apply. It would apply to the town administrator, but doesn't apply to someone who's not directly overseeing that project. Is that clear? Board agrees with that summary from the attorney?
Yes.
It makes more sense to me, yes.
It does. It does. The other issue we did have some lengthy discussion about was the thresholds that were changed in section 11. So when we adopted the new policy, we changed the first section to be less than $10,000. Just required an invoice. $10,000 to $35, $34,999 required three solicitations from three different companies. And then anything over $35,000 required a sealed bid. And if I'm remembering correctly, that threshold used to be $50,000. And then that middle tier was $10,000 to $49,999. There was some concern and discussion that things cost a lot more now, so it didn't make sense to go down in those thresholds. The other thing it does is it requires anything over, essentially anything over $35,000 in the public works section to have an engineer, which therefore also applies to cost. Not sure if the board has any thoughts on changing those back or if they want to stick with them as drafted or some other-
I'd like to see it go at least back to where it was. I don't know if anyone, the road commissioner, anyone has been put on putting it higher or how comfortable the board would be going higher. Just like you said, the costs are going up, so it's odd that the threshold went down.
I would be opposed to moving it back to 50. So move it back and if it becomes a problem, then we can readdress it at that point.
You say you would or would not?
I would not be opposed to moving it back to 50.
I thought you said would not. I'm also not opposed to doing that. Off the top of your head, can you give me an example of a project that would be $40,000? I guess I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Are you thinking of a emergency job or job that needs to get done?
Well, emergency jobs are example.
Yeah, I think emergency jobs are different.
Just a standard job.
Yeah, I withdraw my question because it's still been required. The engineer was going to make the call.
Well, basically, it depends on what happens with the road to the winner. If it actually blows away, you know, sometimes, all winners act different for us and stuff. So if all of a sudden loses a section of the road, then that would be an example that it would have to. But I have no problem coming with you guys, to you guys, and explaining it to you, what's going on. I've done it always in the past, we never just went and did a project and then we're discussing it. How much is it to overlay? To overlay, well, it all depends about, they used to put down like a half to three quarters of an inch, and I found an inch and a quarter worked so much better, lasted so much longer, you actually get some meat back in it. And so I had to figure it out one time, I think it was $10,000 for 1,000 feet. Last time.
Right.
Right, yeah, I mean, any other way, if they might get in the springtime, we've all got soft stuff, where you only got a half inch, plow catches it, it rips it right out. So biggest key is to get enough strength in it. And we use no sand mix, we use 12.5 for everything, that's 12.5. When I say 12.5, that's a half inch to 5-inch rock in the mixture. It's not sand or anything else, and it's, didn't seem to be working out pretty good. Actually, we haven't even put any of the, even only surface a road down with 12.5.
Any other board questions, comments? I will go ahead and make a motion that we change section 11B to read 10,000 to 49,999. And section C to be anything over $50,000.
Well, second half.
Especially behind the motion, all in there? That is against.
So in the, I just want you to know, in the past, if we do have a job up there, I don't move anything without bringing it to you guys first and discussing it, the pros and cons, before we involve, you know, get anybody else involved in it, so.
Your turn.
If it's something we really need, then, yeah. It's not like I just want to try to find a job to do and.
Yes, you don't have to do it. Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the purchasing policy?
No, I appreciate that, I don't want to say anything.
Absolutely. Brings us to old business, item four, consider updating the human resources policy. We have, sorry. We have gone through this policy line by line with the attorney over several hours. I suspect you've had a chance to.
I did, I went through the whole thing.
What is the pleasure of it all?
Well, I had a couple of questions. Just going through Julie's redline copy. When it got to.
Do you want this one? That's the white model.
So the redline copy, page 28, or is the old copy, page 35, the recommendation was to move, remove the last three paragraphs.
I don't see any red lines on the 28 or 29.
What section is it in?
Is it here, under the domestic violence and the workplace policy?
Okay, so new page 35, old page 28. So that is under late duty or restricted duty policy. And these are all from the town attorney, or was this?
All of the red line changes are from the town attorney.
Right, but the, the line itself, is that?
She didn't, didn't like this language. Because there's too many exceptions, too many what ifs. Her recommendation is to just strike it, only refer to that first paragraph, and then treat late duty on a case-by-case basis.
Which totally makes sense. But those were left in the new copy. On page 28.
You are correct.
So I didn't know if that was intentional or not, but yeah, I think it exists.
Was a mess, probably, we went through and said, oh, red lines, and didn't catch this one.
It's on page 28 of the new?
Yes.
Yeah, 35 of the red line. Return to, return to duty policy.
And then on page 45 of the red line, there's a star at the bottom, that's page 37 in the updated copy. So that is in the middle of the computer's email, social media. There's just a star on that page, and I didn't know if that was, there was supposed to be something in there.
That could have been where we left off.
They could have made a star to, yeah, that might have led to such a break or something.
And then my last question, which is more, which is for curiosity, FMLA, is that handled through a main municipal, or is that a main first benefit?
It's payroll, it's through payroll.
Through payroll.
Yeah.
Those were all the questions, but yeah, I think it looks great, everything makes sense.
A cleanup.
Obviously blessed by the attorney, so. And I assume department heads have no issues with that yet, been keeping them for a while.
Yeah, I mean, really, most of these changes are legal challenges, things that are changed in the law since they were originally drafted, or things that, even had a return to order, so some of that labor regulations have changed, just changing our policy. Too big, trying to be too generous and.
And it only pertains to employees.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I would move to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Most of mine were just, there was like some spots that it switched to, like, instead of talking about the employee, it switched to like, if you are this, if you are that, so just have consistency in the language. And I can send where I found those things. I was also wondering if there would be any benefit in collapsing the table of contents a little bit, because that alone is seven pages. So instead of listing out all of the.
The same as basic.
Yeah, the sub, the subtopics, maybe just stick with the, the name of the section. Another thing I noticed is that we referenced bylaws a couple of times in regards to the fire department. They don't have bylaws anymore, they just operate off of policies after they were restructured a little while ago.
I didn't mention that, Julie.
Hi. There was another one in here that I think there was a duplicate. It was, there's a section, I think it has to do with the main, the main paid leave. We have a main paid leave section, and then we have a main paid leave section under the leaves of absence section. So there's some duplication there.
This one where?
Well, there are two separate main leave laws now. There's, there are time leave, and then there's the potentially coming paid family.
Yeah. As long as it's supposed to be talking about the same thing, or takes him up twice. Updating the language where we changed the type of employee to stipend slash per diem in the town of office operations. I did notice like the work week language appears like five times, I think throughout, so I don't know if there's an opportunity to reduce some of that. Yeah, that was the, we talked about it. So there's the main earned paid leave has its own section.
Two separate laws.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the new one that's supposed to take it back to January 1st. But we've been paying for it.
Yeah, okay, as long as, I just wanted to clarify that it was to. I got it.
So do we want to approve it, knowing we have to change a few of the, some of the language, which I don't think changes the agenda policy? Do we want you to actually get those changes, Julie, and do a fresh copy and approve it, or next week?
I'm comfortable approving my changes, but I don't know if you're.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, more radical than anything.
Absolutely, so I hope you do.
So is that a motion?
I move to accept as a matter of fact.
Second? All in there?
Off the agenda.
Don't worry, I know there's.
All right, brings us back to new business, we have any other new business? Okay, brings us to item four, public comment. Any members of the public have anything in mind in terms of?
You know, I realize, I didn't realize actually how long it's been since I've been to one of these meetings, until I walk in and see everybody's news. Except Carly.
Well, different. Could you just introduce yourself?
My name is Nicholas Hamlet, I live over at 200 plus this point. And thank you, this is a great meeting, I appreciate it. We used to come to the meetings, but we stopped coming because, and so I just want to say thank you and introduce myself, I'm running for House Representatives District 49. So this November, you'll see a whole bunch of me, all year long, I'm sure you get. Again, thank you, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, future agenda items.
I have one. When we had elections at the fire hall last, or beginning of this month, with the new exit out the back, there was some lighting challenges. So if with the configuration change, that's going to be a permanent thing going forward, I'd just like to look into maybe doing a lighting project on the back of there, so the fire crews aren't scrambling.
I have talked to them, and Jonathan said that, because I mentioned.
Yes.
And I'm pretty sure that they're working on getting that taken care of, so that the lighting is better to go halfway.
Yeah. I don't know, this falls, I don't think this falls in our future, and I just wanted to remember that. Has any communication been sent out about the wood bank availability?
We just got that, he has today.
Yeah, when I was backing in, I, my headlights illuminated it.
It's on Becky sending the weekly email out tomorrow, and she's gonna take a picture of the changes.
Great. That was all for me.
I don't know, Carly knows about it.
The wood bank? I just overheard a little bit of the conversation before the meeting last week, so that's exciting.
Yeah. And we have two bins?
Two bins.
And if they run out, then there's the opportunity to refill them as well. Just means somebody has to go get one, so I'm willing to do that accordingly. I have a couple for us to consider. I was curious, when was the last time we did a review of our permit fees? And we should look at that again, especially with, you know, take changes and whatnot. We need to make sure we're charging appropriate amount to cover staff's time to administer and manage those fees. And we talked about it a couple of times, but I'd like for us to explore road organs. And I'm not sure if that starts with us, or where that starts.
We brought her out to Kristin, she said we can do it, so.
We could remind her, and certainly, we'd like your input on that as well. Any other future agenda?
Just because we got some last-minute info for the abatements, is, there's no deadline for, for receiving information?
I'm trying.
There was previously, yeah.
Yes, it was.
We, we.
We're trying to get back on track the past years, and then.
I didn't know this was a normal thing, or?
No, it's not. Well, it has been normal, but.
Ideally, we have it all in the prior report.
Right, I thought that it was how it was back, it's been so long.
One last thing that jogged my memory, as I was reading the HR manual, in the computer and internet use section, talks a lot about even if you're accessing any town paid for internet service on a personal device. And at the firehouse right now, I believe that anybody that rents the hall is running off of wifi that's in the building. So I don't know if it would be worth looking at, like a secure, separate, like a guest.
Yeah, we should consider that, yeah.
Did they do that with town hall here? I know we've talked about having like a guest access, no?
We don't really.
Step out the door and phone over.
Yeah, don't get on your phone at town hall in the first place, but.
Any other future agenda items? Select board comments and announcements, town hall will be closed next Thursday and Friday to celebrate Thanksgiving. And licensees are now available, received by postcard reminder in the mail today, thank you. Any other comments or announcements?
We'll move to adjourn, I guess.
You have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
Second.
All in there? That's, you know, it's nice everyone.